My first allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the water for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under new business, fifteen-two, there'll be an executive session discussing personnel matter. Mr. S A four five eight and fifteen-three suggested calendar change for two thousand nineteen twenty-two year. If with, it's alright with everyone, I'd like to move the robotics presentation up to now. And I'll let them go and. Yep. Just to update people if you're not aware, this morning I found out that we were all of Pine Tree District Events cancelled and Tuesday night at nine o'clock, I found out that our North Shore Event was cancelled. And then this afternoon, I found out everything in the whole country is cancelled, including Worlds. So, no robotics program is going. Unfortunately for us, Tuesday night, we had a pretty fantastic night working with Mount Blue. We've only built one of the best robots we've been able to play the game the way we wanted to play it. And I'll have the kids explain it. Unfortunately, we had some computer issues tonight, so we're not driving. I don't know what's going on with my computer. Something physically wrong with our computer. I'm moving in. I'm very nervous today. So, we'd like to talk about the shooter.
Shooter? Okay. So, we have a.
Yeah.
A drug shooter. Basically, we have an axle, a wheel, that just brings the balls up and will shoot high and into a top power core. And we have another wheel, which basically feeds the balls into our shooter. Yeah. And then, we have a wheel at the top here, which is connected to a.
Linear.
Linear actuator, which it will make contact with a control panel, which is basically like a wheel fortune on the arena. And we just have to rotate the control panel three to five times for points. And then we have an intake, right here, which is meant to pick up balls from the ground and it will come up right into our little box area. But with this open area in the front, we can also go right up to the loading zone, where basically our team of players, Quinn, go drop balls in and they'll just fall right into our box area.
Just to give a little context to this too, so this year, the game is all themed around Star Wars and it's like Force Awakens type thing. And so on the field, there's this big area called the trench, which has a very low portal at the end of it. So, it's like Luke Skywalker flying his X-wing fighter to blow up the Death Star. It's exactly what it looks like. And so, the robot either needs to be short enough to go under that little archway. So, if you want to build a tall robot, you can do that, but then you can't go down the trench run. And you don't have to, but if you don't go down the trench run, there's all these obstacles in your way and other places on the field. And there's also a part of the game where there's an asteroid storm headed to our planet and there's a giant switch that you have to turn on. And the objective there is to put the shield on to save the planet from the asteroids. Well, the switch requires robots to grab onto it, pull it down, it swings, and robots actually have to hang and balance that switch out. So, you're gonna have like three robots hanging on this big overhead bar off the ground and keeping it within eight degrees of horizontal. So, it's the Star Wars game elements, you see the Star Wars logos and things all over the field. They even use the language with Star Wars, if anybody knows, they have their own alphabet. A lot of the stuff in the rulebook is written in Star Wars. So, they've really, really jumped in with the theme this year. Did you want to tell them about how to hang the coin up?
Yeah, so, the other system on a robot here is our hanging, as you talked about, with the bar that teeters back and forth. So, what we have is a deployable hook. So, this is a telescoping system that goes all the way up to reach the height that we need. And then what we do is deploy the hook and then point ourselves up and just hang by the bar that's at the center of our robot. So, it works pretty well and it allowed us to be able to stay underneath that trench that you talked about.
Literally the power button on the computer. I think they got it turned back together. Give us a thirty-second try. Fly the hook, read the hook up. Pretty complicated system, a pulley system and the wires and everything to get this to go off and stay up. And then, when he gets up to the hook, they drop it down. And then, go ahead and gauge and wedge for the number of.
Let me flick, light it up now. Let's go on.
Go ahead and pull it all the way up, just to wait, get it out of the way. Now you try. They'll drive it all night. So, everybody have any questions? The game this year is one that we're gonna have other robots that are gonna be shooting from great distances, but missing a lot of times. The reality is, is that very few robots can shoot five balls all at once and we know that a lot of them shoot three and two of them go free. And our whole game is to pick up, be the pickup ball, pickup game, pickup other things. The other thing, we made our robot very low so we can run through a station that the bigger robots can and we can go to the loading station and load our cargo and go back very quickly. We did put pneumatic wheels on it this year, so it does bounce over things pretty well. Share your question.
Are these all size two kids or are some of these multiple?
No, they're all.
They're all size two. Do you have any other questions here too?
Yes.
Can I give the robot a test drive? I guess.
Come and have a pumpkin festival, that's the time to test drive everything. Yeah, why don't you put up, can you put up a layer of slides? Oh, it doesn't raise up, and then, before this, they couldn't clear under that barrier. Now that can clear under that barrier because wheel is like this big around, spins it around and you gotta go three times but not five and you gotta spin to a certain color. Oh yeah, where's the hole? So, we gotta talk to, there you go. Hope you that's the most we'll use for. One of the things that's unique is how this stays up, has a ratchet wrench, so that it only can go up, then when it gets to the top and the power gets cut and the motor wants to let it down, the wrench keeps it going down. So, that's one of the ways we can break it. So, we've actually had the same wrench, the same climate, various robots, just reconfigured in different places. So, we do not know when we compete again. We have no clue. When we open for an off-season event, they get the ball. Yes.
I just want to mention this with the robot. The building of the robot is one thing, but there's also kids that write the programming for it. And there's also kids that write the report for the chairman's award, so they have to do some research and write up a present and write a report, submit it, do a presentation in front of the judges for the chairman's award. And Scott does our entrepreneurship presentation. So, it's like a business kind of party. So, the robot is the funnest, coolest part, but there's also other things that go on in the background.
And then we have a bunch of parents who are seamstresses making, they have uniforms for all the drive team and costumes and food and logistics. We feed thirty people every weekend all year long. It's quite an involved process to go through the whole season.
Who's wearing the jabacu?
Nobody. I would.
Here.
Can I give it a test drive?
Nobody said it's a test drive. Like I said, the apple pumpkin festival, there'll be three robots there, you can do all kinds of driving, all that to do.
Like that one?
Yeah, just like that one. We have other, two other ones, one that shoots for his reason, the other one that has bigger balls and puts it up in the air. You're welcome.
Can I take a look at the robot?
You can come over here if you want. Sorry, I think we've taken up enough of your time. Thank you very much. Again, thank you for our robotic presentation. And I've taken a motion to approve the school board minutes, February thirteenth. I'm Captain Hoover, here we are. Yeah. Okay, I mean, the motion to approve them, wait a second. Any air conditions? No, I'll go to the greater school board. Oh. And not moving. Yeah, communications we can have, and audit presentation. Ron Smith, Principal of American Chastity Company. I just had a pledge of meeting with your finance committee prior to this meeting and I needed to order the audit results. So, I'm Ron Smith, Principal of American Chastity Company. Here to go over the results of your two thousand nineteen audit, answering questions from all the candidates. And yeah, so to tell you a little bit about ourselves, we audit over two hundred and twenty governments in the state of Maine, we know a lot about what you do and certainly, you know, we need to answer any and all your questions and talk about some other things that are going on, you know, in the industry, school or municipal government or county government. So, whatever I can do to help you sounding board the city and what we're doing there. So, going back to two thirty nineteen, overall, the financial, you've got the highest attendance we could give you for the audit and unmodified, I think. Financially, the district is in, I would say, above average shape of a school system, based on an operating budget of about eighteen point eight million dollars. You guys carried forward almost a little under a million and a half dollars. And between your two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one budget, I understand, statutorily, there's a mechanism that allows you to, you're going to pick based on three percent of your previous years approved budget. And anything over that, you're supposed to use your tax return. And just to put what that number is, it's about three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, doesn't go well under, you know, that statute, so certainly nothing to worry about or be alarmed there. Probably one of the concerns that we saw for your two thousand nineteen audit was a couple of things. Fiscally, your school service program overspent for a lot of reasons too. I think maybe revenue projections were probably strong in that for sure. You know, some expenses that we saw were excessive of the budget. So, that was about a hundred thousand dollars on June thirty, two thousand nineteen. So, I understand, you know, that you've got a proposal in front of you, Crystal and Scott that remedy that one upcoming budget. We certainly endorse that proposal, you've got plenty of options. That sounds like that number could be bigger, two thousand one, just because of some other misprojections or lack of, if that way to say it, but certainly solvable. And what I'll certainly say about school service, next to the cost of education itself, we go over the current school system. So, next to the cost of education itself, it's probably the most underfunded program out there nationally and country. You know, so it's a tough one to, you know, to certainly best stay with the constraints and certainly having to get post some challenges certainly for rushing seventy-three. Administratively and programmatically, there was a lot of talking points of food service that we worked through with Crystal and those, the compliance concerns, I can say that we've addressed all of those. But June thirty, two thousand nineteen was a tough year, certainly in that area. I'm confident now, working with the business office, that a lot of those things have been remedied, you know, for sure going forward. You know, and I just think it's gonna be watching approach, you know, for you go through your new service practice on Florida. And I think that's probably the bigger challenge, you know, that we saw, you know, for the school system. We appreciate it, thank you all for her support and help and her staff. You know, it was our first year of working with the school district, so we certainly enjoy the relationship. I'm not sure she reciprocates that, except that we definitely talk about a lot, you know, this year. You know, some of the other challenges and some of the other best practices, but I would, I would say food service is probably your biggest challenge going forward, you know, for sure. So. And I've already done all, you know, that I have, there's some highlights, you know, the big level points, you know, but there was some other best practice issues, you know, that we had talked about with Crystal, you know, just maybe some better practices with the kids and, you know, in the recording, as I recall, the student activity counts, but other than that, there was nothing really there that said, wow, you know, that's really something to be able to get now. I think the only wow that we saw was food service, for sure. Any questions? Comments? We have two recurring qualifications from one Jalen C, Science teacher, Cleveland High School, another from New York Technology Teacher, Cleveland High School. Accept those with regret. Joel and second. Dan, any comments?
Since he's here, I want to say thank you, Dan, for everything for all the years of working with you and the team on and off through all of this. Great to see the way they all smile and get into this.
I'm just very lucky, I have a job I truly love. I really love my job, but it's time, it's time. I've been here for thirty-seven years and it's time to move on to a different chapter and so my wife and I have decided that's what we're doing and so we're moving forward, I guess. And it's been an interesting couple of years, the last couple of years, definitely been interesting with everything that you've had to deal with, the situations we've had, but it's gone pretty well. I think the thing I'm proudest of is all the grants I've written over the years. I've written so many different grants and so many different things, the national paper grants and rural alternative grants, wind turbines, solar panels and brought in thirty thousand dollars with the grants for the robotics program. It's been, you know, it's a lot of work, but it really makes it all pay off in the end. I guess that's the thing I'm proud of, so, thank you.
Although the major accepting, congratulations. Oh. And I have a thank you card, Dan, here to school board members, thank you beyond words with some of the cards you sent, haven't lost my father. It was such a nice thing to receive during such a difficult time, it made me smile. Appreciate it, it's the one thing you know. Thank you again, Campbell and Carter. Under public comments, I think we have one. Rob Taylor.
So, I just wanted to take an opportunity to talk a little bit about looking forward to the budget and looking at resources at the middle school. We're dealing with a lot of behavior issues, a lot of students that are struggling socially, emotionally. It's been a very, very challenging year. And looking forward, you know, I know the administration's working really hard to try and provide resources and trying to help with the situation, but I just really want to know that it's a particularly challenging year for middle school, for middle school staff. People are working extremely hard. There's just a lot of work being done. I had the opportunity to go with the team to Liddier Middle School down Poland and we got to see how their restorative justice program works. And there's a group of people working on our schedule for next year and really looking at restructuring our school in terms of how do we implement some of these ways of dealing with student behavior. And it requires resources. One of the things I know that they're building into the budget is looking at a restorative room with a person to staff it. And basically, that gives you a place for kids to go, to decompress, to maybe get some counseling, get some help and alleviate some of the pressure on the central, on our middle school office staff, because we're all feeling it. I know the staff is feeling it, I know Mr. Henderson and Mr. Collins are feeling it. It's just been a very, very trying year and we need, we need resources, we need help. And I'm a science teacher and I know how to teach kids science and I know how to build relationships with kids and we have all our staff are that way. We have people that have a lot of professional expertise and they do know how to build relationships with kids, but sometimes the kids are coming at us with issues that, within that classroom setting, are just really hard to manage and really hard to deal with. And, you know, I just wanted to really make sure the board is aware of where we're at with things. And when you're looking at that budget for next year, I know there are things built in there, they're essential, they're really, really important. And quite honestly, a lot of the staff at the middle school feels it's, it's probably the minimum. We've got a big sixth grade class coming in next year and those things are gonna, they're gonna help, they're gonna put us on the right path, but they're just really, really important. And I know we're kind of beginning of the budget process, but I just wanted to really stress that. Do anyone have any questions? Thank you very much.
Any board comments?
So, I wanted to mention that last Thursday on the fifth, we were going to the State House, my son Orion received the Legislative Memorial Scholarship from the Legislature. And it wasn't just my son, we went there and sitting there was Lily Towers and her family. And so, this scholarship, there's one that goes out to each, to one child, or a college student, I should say, one college student in each county. And Spruce Mountain had two representatives that won the award, so I just wanted to share that. I was like, go Spruce. It was pretty, I was pretty proud. And Tina Riley was our host and Russell Black and they were both very accommodating and pretty proud, so, thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you. The coronavirus, I'm sure everybody's hearing about it, it's on the news, seven five minutes and everywhere. A lot of us both sent home and mailed home today. It was also emailed to staff and it was also put on our website. It was information and an outline what the CDC suggests for precautions. We will be taking a look at this day by day. I have another meeting tomorrow with the school nurses to discuss the next steps. Already places up there, like they canceled the Worlds for them, some of the things that we're doing on this end. Under public comments, I think we have one, Rob Taylor.
So I just wanted to take an opportunity to talk a little bit about looking forward at the budget and looking at resources at the middle school. We're dealing with a lot of behavior issues, a lot of students that are struggling socially, emotionally. It's been a very, very challenging year. And looking forward, you know, I know the administration's working really hard to try and provide resources and trying to help with the situation, but I just really want to know that it's a particularly challenging year for middle school, for middle school staff. People are working extremely hard. There's just a lot of work being done. I had the opportunity to go with the team to Liddier Middle School down in Poland and we got to see how their restorative justice program works. And there's a group of people working on our schedule for next year and really looking at restructuring our school in terms of how do we implement some of these ways of dealing with student behavior? And it requires resources. One of the things I know that they're building into the budget is looking at a restorative room with a person to staff it. And basically that gives you a place for kids to go, to decompress, to maybe get some counseling, get some help and alleviate some of the pressure on the central, on our middle school office staff, because we're all feeling it. I know the staff is feeling it. I know Mr. Henderson and Mr. Collins are feeling it. It's just been a very, very trying year and we need, we need resources, we need help. And I'm a science teacher and I know how to teach kids science and I know how to build relationships with kids and we have all our staff are that way. We have people that have a lot of professional expertise and they do know how to build relationships with kids, but sometimes the kids are coming at us with issues that within that classroom setting are just really hard to manage and really hard to deal with. And, you know, I just wanted to really make sure that the board is aware of where we're at with things. And when you're looking at that budget for next year, I know there are things built in there, they're essential. They're really, really important. And quite honestly, a lot of the staff at the middle school feels it's, it's probably the minimum. We've got a big sixth grade class coming in next year and those things are gonna, they're gonna help, they're gonna put us on the right path, but they're just really, really important. And I know we're kind of beginning of the budget process, but I just wanted to really stress that. Do anyone have any questions? Thank you very much.
Any board comments?
So I wanted to mention that last Thursday on the fifth, we were going to the State House, my son Orion received the Legislative Memorial Scholarship from the Legislature. And it wasn't just my son. We went there and sitting there was Lily Towers and her family. And so this scholarship, there's one that goes out to each, to one child or a college student, I should say, one college student in each county. And Spruce Mountain had two representatives that won the award, so I just wanted to share that. I was like, go Spruce. It was pretty, I was pretty proud. And Tina Riley was our host and Russell Black and they were both very accommodating and pretty proud, so thank you.
Anyone else?
For dinner, boy. Thank you. The coronavirus, I'm sure everybody's hearing about it, it's on the news, every five minutes and everywhere. A lot of us both sent home and mailed home today. It was also emailed to staff and it was also put on our website. It was information and an outline what the CDC suggests for precautions. We will be taking a look at this day by day. I have another meeting tomorrow with the school nurses to discuss the next steps. Already places up there, like they canceled the worlds for them. Some of the things that we're doing on this end, it's already going to be decided for us on the other end. The reason I want to take it slow and take a look at some things a few weeks at a time is we don't know where things are going to be. And may I hate to cancel something in May and things change for the positive in the next two or three weeks. So the things that we'll be looking at with the school nurses and the ad team will be what we need to do to keep kids safe in the next few weeks, but then we'll then reevaluate weeks later and see if we have to continue what we're doing, make things more intense or less than, less than that, so that we can go back to normal as much as possible. Had several meetings with parents the last couple of weeks, sort of all two of the topics. On February twenty-fourth, I had our monthly superintendent's meeting with all the superintendents for the WNEC. On February fourth, I met with the district's evaluation team. We meet once a month to go over our PK. March eleventh, I met with the West of Maine superintendent's at Auburn and I also met with association president Nate Heidenholm that day. And during this last couple of weeks, I had continued to have my weekly meetings with Chairman Staples.
I received mine adopted to not have outside organizations use their schools or anything. Is that something we're going to do?
That's one of the things we'll be discussing with the nurses tomorrow, what should we give next in the process of others people using outside. I know the governor today said, you know, not having groups of two hundred and fifty more, but I know some schools are looking at even dropping down under down. So that'll be discussed tomorrow and that information will be going out to everybody after that.
How, is it going to go out to the general public?
You can make sure it's in the paper, I'll call Pam directly.
I've been keeping track of how, I guess I'm on the opposite end, how hospitals are going to be refunded for other supplies. Have we heard anything on how schools will be refunded for supplies that they have to buy to clean, to clean areas?
Haven't heard, yes, no.
You may, it's just a thought, we might want to keep track if we have to up fund cleaning supplies and lots and things like that. There is money that was proportioned to like healthcare facilities, but I haven't heard anything else.
And administrator reports, Ken.
Since last time, this one meeting has been a little while, but over that time, just letting you know that we, we had four fire alarms, three at the middle school, one at the primary school. We solved all of them, but during the time, on the twenty-first of February, was the first fire alarm, was the first one at the middle school, it went on approximately for fifteen in the morning. We went out in the fire alarm zone, we were aiming around, and we got the location, because on the panel it tells the location where it was, so we found out which center it was coming from. We thought we fixed it. It was a good thing that day, we happened to have, you know, Russell does all of our fire alarm systems. They were coming in anyway to do some work on one of the magnet doors. So they went through it and told us, showed that it was a sensor, they cleaned it all up and so nothing happened and then we thought it was going to be good. So behold, on the twenty-third, we get fire alarm, we're at the primary school. That was an easy solve. We knew exactly what that was, we went in on Sunday morning. It was a leaking faucet, must say it, that leaked down to the ceiling and had to land right onto the sensor, set that up. So we got that all cleaned out, that roof cleaned out, that new floor cleared and got the sensor out of that, so that's, that's pretty resolved. Then on the twenty-fourth, we got another alarm at the middle school, just happened to be at four fifteen AM in the morning. So we, we were kind of wondering what it was, but so we had to come back and they checked everything out and come find out again. They felt they had to replace that sensor, which they did. And on the twenty-sixth, we got another fire alarm at four fifteen AM in the morning. And I knew the fire pattern can vary every day, it can appear more at four fifteen, I know I was getting every day, it went over at four fifteen in the morning, but, but so anyway, heading back in, they cleaned eleven of the sensors and since they've done that, we have any more alarms. But we are, we are looking at also a different program through, through Northern that will detect if one, if any of the sensors, right now, it tells us an area, when the alarm goes off, it tells an area like an off wing, a south wing, downstairs, upstairs. But with this new, with the new sensor detect, we tell it exactly what sensor was going on, if we had our problem there. We don't look for the problem right now, but it's something that. And over the last several weeks, we've also had a lot of maintenance reviews we've been doing, a lot of leaky faucets, we have found toilets that had to be repaired. Seems to seem a lot, a lot of little small leaky toilets and, and so we've gone through all those. Also, if you go to a school, you'll notice that all of our eye wash stations are now there, all of them, we had approximately six portable eye wash stations. We've riddled all those. There's some of the private labor and municipal men that recommended that we do, that we get direct eye washes, so we put up all direct eye washing now and you'll also see there being a couple of extra ones in every area. And new to someone, every area, if everybody wants a list, I can show you the list, but we had several in case they initially need. Over, over February vacation, I believe, we know that one day the, the, here in Gilbert there, he, he held an active shooter program training at the high school, middle school, so it was a day that was, high school, middle school was kind of locked off, several of the, the staff who, Scott and the secretary, things were also involved in that. We had a good time, but during that time, twenty-two of, had, probably in the bus I went through, training also with DOL, some of the things that they'd written stuff on before and we get this program now, so we did training on those, on the EDA book. So, you know, did you all know, did what long after, did, you know, and hazard communication and there were several of those. And we'll finish up here, here's a group that we have. Overall, we have forty-four things that we actually have to go through, not all mandatory, but many things that we just discussed and had to deal with transportation also. On February eleventh, Lou Sossia from the State of Maine Board of Pesticide Control, he came in and inspected for our pest management program. Very good there, we got, we got the okay, we got this nature signed on that, that was a good thing. And one other thing I'll go through is, I did pass out to you all an account history last time, I think it was Joel and Doug had asked about contract special accounts on facilities, why had it gone over and if we felt that we had to add more to it. I don't feel we have to add more, but if you look at that on each page, you'll see, I highlighted there, why, why had it gone over? One of the big ones was four thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars for each of those three schools, which we found out was a performance of assurance that was expected through Siemens for the program that we, when we did the phase one. That, that was never expected to be coming out of this, these accounts. So you took that away and then you took the other one that I had highlighted there and some things that just misplaced into this, this account that should have come out of this different accounts like those and these and some of the, what we're doing here is, I think if you look at them all, I brought down all the figures on the bottom and show you that how it's, what it would be now, so that we actually have something left in each one of them. They, they all come up very close. On that, on that, on that account, you know, when you guys brought it up, which was very good that you did and you noticed that it never should really go that much. And that's, that account, when I passed you out that thing that day, that showed all the things that come out of there, that's normally what we take out of there. For some reason, these things got out of it. Something that Scott and myself and Crystal will be talking about, the thing, I'm sure they're going to be talking to some of your board members, on that, four thousand, four hundred and forty dollars, do we want to even continue that program? This program that Siemens created to tell us how much money we're saving on, on the performance box, so if it's nothing we want, then we'll, we'll deduct it out of whatever on it. If it is something you truly want, and when we meet in the two, Siemens and Tuesday, then we will have taken out of something, that service will have come out somewhere. And then to finish up with, on, on this coronavirus nineteen, you know, I have said I would all, all the stories we talked about, how I clean up that, some of the things that we got to focus on the most, the disinfectant, the bathtubs, the school desk and things. I mean, there may be a few little things that won't be there in some of the rooms in time, but I feel those are the main things and all the touch points that people pass on the handle and things. We mentioned about keep a track, we certainly will keep track of that, but I think also I've talked about two vendors that we have, the two biggest in the state, and that I think the hospital could run into some of the same problems is that they really haven't had enough, get a lot of things right now. And if you notice everybody else, if they run any supermarket, everything, toilet paper, hand sanitizer, disinfectant things are getting had, it's going to happen countrywide. So, you know, hopefully we got enough to keep this open and hopefully the vendors are going to keep producing enough for us, at least on the main issues, certainly on the cleaning side, so.
Any questions, Jim? Thank you. Yes?
Okay, back in October, I talked about budget grants that I signed up. We did very well. I put in for the VW Environmental litigation act, put in for two buses, we granted one bus at sixty-six thousand four hundred dollars. The bus of purchasing was ninety-nine thousand thirty-five dollars. If you take that out, thirty-two thousand, we'll pay for a new bus. I also put in for the diesel admission, emissions reduction act to the EPA, I put in eight qualifying buses, we got five, that's twenty thousand dollars apiece, so that was another hundred thousand dollars that we got in buses. This grant was able to be spread out over two years, so I sat with Scott and Crystal, we went through the budget, the payments that we had coming out. We went with this for two years, so we didn't have to raise any budget line at all to pay for the other buses that we got coming. And we have three new we paid off in August, when these buses should show up in August, around August. So we're purchasing two from the Deer Grant this year and one from the YW grant. And then I also put in to the, to the state side, the cycle of twenty-twenty-one, for twenty-nine passenger mini-bus. Well, we received that also, forty-eight thousand six hundred and twelve, it's a change, something like that. I had that in, you know, I think it was a little different, but. So that goes towards the purchase. That bus will probably come out right around fifty-five thousand, maybe a little bit more, so we won't have to pick up much of the tab on that one. So, and that mini-bus, we're going to use it, we could use it for like half team trips across country, bike-able, things like that, the smaller, the smaller things, or shuttle bus to do things, we could use a co-conglue and things like that, or even if we get more kids going out of district, that would be something we can use. So since two thousand and nineteen, we've received two hundred and forty thousand one hundred dollar grant money to replace buses with more efficient engines. And this will update athlete with nine new buses. So that's, we got twenty-one on the road every day, so half of them, basically, we've got to replace. And that figures out to two and a half full-size buses. That's about me on the grants, we've done really well. I was real surprised when we got five. Any questions on that? And we have started disinfecting the buses also, I know we can't talk about that in schools, we're doing buses. We've got one of the old spraying machines, like they showed on the news the other night, do the buses, we're going to start doing them like once a week, of spraying down and then wiping down with disinfectant wipes and stuff like that, so that's in place. And the only other thing I had is Sean and I had done a presentation on how to support highly-owned students in Bangor on three ten, that had to do with the Bikini Bottom Act or something like that.
Any questions, Jim?
Thank you, thanks.
So just a brief update for you, just continuing to do that periodic review, we've been hoping to be under the five oh four model into the buildings. As the year has gone on, I've tried to identify ways to sort of streamline the process for the distribution of the paperwork associated with that. So incorporating those as we go, so I feel like a lot of it can be done electronically and a lot of parents appreciate it, we can do it electronically. When I get permission to do it, share it, and then it's thrown in the Google Drive and those kinds of things. So those are the types of things we've been doing this year, which has been, and it's improved and it also saves a little bit on printing and mailing costs too, so it's pretty, it's pretty good. There's the annual faculty board conference that I've been a part of in May, but I'll announce, maybe it'll be virtual, I'm not sure, but I'll keep you posted on that. And then since the last time this year, I've been invited, drafted, invited to participate on two different committees. One was the concussion management team, so I went to the initial one meeting with that Jackie and the rest of that team, and then the chairman and I made a participant. And the basics intervention team that we're just putting together, intervention, I said, primary school, elementary school, so had a couple of meetings and those will be, it looks like, either weekly or bi-weekly for the near future forever. Is that all right?
Forever.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay, so referrals are still coming in steady. We're doing special ed. This week may have been week one, so I don't have this in my numbers to tell you, but there's just still, there's just been studying. The need is definitely there across the district. I was going to talk about media SOS, we call it. Can Tigris stand for success? Success? We have a little, I remember we named it, but it is getting together all those services, like five oh four, special ed, just social workers, the building administrators, and RTI, just because there's a lot of overlap across those services and just to clean up and learn from one another process, so that the net that we put under children to make sure that we have everybody covered is complete. So if you had to, so far, we're going to need to read, just so that we can put our heads together to help all of students do their best. We have had some open physicians that have been out there and this week I was able to fill a few of those tech positions that are, that were out there at the level school and high school and at Young and Care School, we still have one that I need to still fill, but I have still a couple of books that have put in for those physicians, so I'm hopeful to have that completed soon. We also have, our OT person is at her max and then some ethically and otherwise, and so she had the aid who designed. so she had a day who resigned because she was offered a full-time position in her other part-time job. And so we've had the fortune to have interviewed one, and they try to find people with O T that want to work part-time. But she's highly qualified and just as good as our current O T, like she says, credentials, a lot of experience, so really happy to have the opportunity to replace that position with someone that's so skilled. Also this week, we are pretty sure we're gonna be up and running next week with an online platform that I talked to you about, self-presence learning, that is, it's a way for us to get out from underwater, because with all the referrals and increases in students, keeping up with evaluations has been difficult, and there's some strong timelines with those, but we have one school psychologist who works four days a week, and we have one who comes in one day a week, and they're at their maxes and getting behind. And so presence learning is a company that I worked with before that provides you a school psychologist via online, because they are certified in the state of Maine, they are not fresh out of college, they have experience and seasoned, and they're able to complete evaluations of students via technology, which might for some of us seem strange, but for kids, I think they don't blink at it. If we thought any kids were not gonna do well in that format, we'd certainly use our people on the ground to do those, but presence learning has already sent us the necessary equipment that we'll need, and so that should be up and running next week, so that we stay and get in compliance. We had our financial audit in special ed last week and the week before, and it was just, it was short.